We're on.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of April 14th, 2020. We're doing this meeting via Zoom. We're going to open the meeting. I'd like everyone just to say their name. I can see you here, but we've got one we can't identify. So I'm going to ask who this person is.
Hang on, I'll look them real quick.
It's Mark.
Whoever came in as GFC LLC me.com.
Sorry, that's Mark Barra.
Hi, Mark.
Okay.
Good.
Let me change that real quick.
Okay, so Pat, from now on, David, just let them in during the public hearing process, but keep them muted until public input.
Okay.
All right?
Yep.
Okay, Pat, you want to continue with the item, first item on the agenda?
Yeah, first, we have a public hearing, Maximilian Partners LLC, special permit amendment, interior recreational use, 13 Stony Hill Road. This is a public hearing, so the applicant will present first, and then we'll open it up to any questions from the public, with the public, if you'd be kind enough to put your name and address on record. So we do have legal notice to read. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on April 14th, 2020, at 7:00 PM using the virtual platform Zoom to hear the application of Maximilian Partners LLC for property located at 13 Stony Hill Road for an amended special permit to allow for the lower level of an existing building to be used for indoor recreational purposes, including amusement devices. There are no proposed exterior modifications. The public can send comments via regular mail or email, landuse@bethelct.gov. The public may participate in the hearing by clicking on the attached link in the legal notice. If you would like to participate via home phone, please call our office at 203-794-8578 for instructions. Pat Rist, Chairman. Peter, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report or anything that needs to be read?
No, we don't.
Okay, good. Good evening. My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel, allegedly at 275 Greenwood Avenue, although that's only a couple of days a week now, if that. I'm here on behalf of Maximilian Partners, represented by Mark Barra, who's got the red hat down there in the corner. We sent notice of this meeting by regular mail to all budding property owners within 100 feet. I've submitted a copy of that notice, and it should be in the Google Drive. Executive Order 7I, paragraph 19F, allows those notices to be sent by regular mail rather than certified mail, so that's what we did. Property in question is 13 Stony Hill Road. This was originally approved long ago, operated for many years, and probably everybody remembers it, the Stony Hill Racquet Club. It was a health club for a long time. Maximilian Partners bought it a couple of years ago and has created Monster Mini Golf, which is a mini golf course and has amusement devices and basically a fun place to go for people to hang out, which we're not allowed to do anymore, but, you know, before all of this. We first came to the commission before it was open to ask for a text amendment to allow the amusement devices, video games and things like that, which were prohibited in the zoning regulations. The commission approved that amendment. That was, that gave us the go-ahead to go forward with the use. We then came and asked for a special permit, which is what was required for the operation, and that was granted in 2018. I provided a copy of that, and that's in the Google Drive as well, the recorded special permit. When we did the special permit, we only asked for a special permit and not a site plan, the reason being we were not proposing any significant exterior, any significant exterior improvements to the site or to the building. So there's no site plan approval for this. It's just the special permit. But we did submit a landscaping plan along with that that showed a bunch of landscaping improvements, as well as a sidewalk along Route 6. The special permit, when we applied for it, only authorized use of the upper floors of the building. It did not authorize use of the lower floor. And the reason for that is even though this building has been in place for, you know, almost 40 years, the actual square footage of it, when you apply the current parking regulations to the building, we find that there's nowhere near enough parking for any use allowed by the zone in the regulations. So we started, just to get ourselves open, to say, we'll just open this using the square footage of the first floor. We're in compliance with the regulations for that. Okay. So now we want to try to get the lower floor into use. And we started that process by bringing you a text amendment, which you approved. That text amendment allows you to reduce the parking requirement for all square footage over 10,000 square feet, if, in your opinion, it's not necessary. And so here we are. We are applying to amend our special permit to allow the use of this lower floor, that is, use the square footage on the lower floor without constructing any additional parking. Our intention is to expand the use that's currently in the building, the Monster Mini Golf, and I'll have Mark talk about that in a minute. What we would like to do is use the ground floor. We don't believe we're going to generate any additional parking demand, because we think that the people who come to our facility are going to keep coming to our facility, maybe more often, maybe more spread out, but that our peak demand isn't really going to change. There will be more things for those same people to do, and that we think will be helpful for the business. So let me ask Mark to talk a little bit about getting the business open, where they stand, or where they stood before, say, March 1st, heading into the summer season, and what they plan to put downstairs. Mark?
Great. Thank you, Peter. Thank you, everyone. This is an interesting way of doing a public hearing, starting new territory. Up until, as Peter mentioned, up until three, four weeks ago, we were doing quite well. We've been open about a year and a half now. July, it'll be two years. Year-over-year numbers increased. The concept has really been accepted very well by the community, and we're looking to expand. Obviously, we've come to a screeching halt in the last three weeks, as everyone has. It's not the worst thing in the world. It's giving us some time to do some repairs and to strategize a bit about how to move forward, part of which is the lower level. Couple of things that we want to add down on the lower level are virtual reality arcade, basically different types of virtual reality games, which is the new and in thing in this type of industry. We're looking at mini bowling lanes, not the full-scale bowling alley lanes. These are about a third of the size. They're more of an arcade-type game, and potentially bumper cars, not gas, electric bumper cars, that are basically inflatable inner tubes around a car, and they'll be eight, 10 in a box. So it was, as Peter mentioned, we're looking to expand our offerings in an attempt to get people to come once, twice, three times more a year. Parking will not be an issue, in my opinion. We have a prime time parking. It's not an issue. We have plenty of spaces, but prime time is Saturday and Sunday from around 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Rest of the time during the week and early morning, evenings, you could drive by and see parking in the front, parking in the back, all available. One of the things that I'm asking to have accomplish here in this meeting is to defer the Phase 2 agreement that we have as far as infrastructure on the outside of the building. We're trying to solidify the business plan itself with the new offerings. That's where we're trying to put our capital, and once that's solidified and the building is matured, we're quick again to that point, you know, then we feel like we can put the capital to other uses.
Thanks, Mark. I'll come back, circle back to that point in a minute. So just to be clear, the first request is that you amend the special permit that reduces the required parking on the ground floor to zero, that is, we provide parking for up to the first 10,000 square feet of the building per the zoning regulations, and provide zero spaces for the square footage beyond that, which is about another 10,000 square feet. And so that's how the regulation is written, that you can waive that requirement for everything over 10,000 square feet. So that's the first request. Then, as Mark mentioned, if you look at the special permit that was issued, there is a sentence at the end that says the Phase 2 improvements are to be deferred until we put the ground floor into use. And obviously, that's what we're asking to do here. Now, if this were a new building that we were constructing, we would have, by statute, five years to complete all the improvements. And if we take that from the date of the special permit, that's 2018, to give us to 2023 to complete the improvements. What we're really just asking is for that five-year deadline to be applied to the special permit by essentially an analogy. If we would have had it, if we had a site plan, let us have it along with the special permit, amended special permit, five years to complete all the work. That will let us get this ground floor in use, get the business stabilized, and then go finish, finish the things we're required to do on the outside. So the third thing, just to, just so that we're up front with you, we would love to be able to rent some of this space out to somebody else. That's a different issue that's not dealt with by the current zoning regulations, and I'm racking my brain to find a way to deal with that. I've had a couple of conversations with Beth about it. And we, so we may be back for further tweaks to this, but for now, this is what we need for this year to get going.
Can I jump in real quick and just make a comment and a question? My comment's going to be, if you're going to go on and speak for a prolonged period of time, if there's anything wrong with it, just restate your name for the record. So the transcripts, it's easier for it to pick you up. And a question for Mark is, do I have the spelling of your last name correctly?
You do, yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. I'm sorry, Peter.
I'm done.
Okay.
So that's all I have for tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Marcus as well. Don't know if we have any members of the public to speak, so.
Thank you, Peter. All right. We'll reach out. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this application?
Okay, and the way you're going to reach out for anyone who's in the public is there is a function that lets you raise your hand on Zoom if you have any questions. That's the way for us to acknowledge that you do. We would give you permissions to speak. At that time, when you speak, please identify yourself, who you are, and state your address for the record. All right, I'm not sure if that was unmuted by one of us or not.
Probably BJ.
Is that, oh, is that BJ?
It might be.
I think it's BJ.
Okay.
Try her again. Maybe she's fiddling.
Okay.
She's muted, it looks like.
I just, I mean, is...
Is this BJ?
Yes, BJ's here, but she's not raising her hand.
Oh, okay. Okay, we just had to figure out who you are. All right, I've got it now.
Okay, there you go.
All right, so there's no comments from the public. I'll now reach out to commissioners. Kitty, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to make, you know, I'd like you to clarify more of the parking. The original was for 10,000 square feet. The use is now being doubled to 20,000 square feet. You don't think there's any need for any more parking?
No, we don't, and I'll, and I'll let Mark answer it in one second. The idea is that we want people to come back and use the facility multiple times, and if they're bored with the offerings, they're not going to do that. So by having more offerings, we're going to keep them interested in coming back. But that doesn't really change the peak parking demand on Saturdays and Sundays. It really more spreads it out over the whole year.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, but if we, if there were, if we, if there were to perceive that became a problem, then we'd have to come back and address it.
Yeah, and we have the ability, perhaps, to enter into a shared parking arrangement with the hotel next door.
Right.
You know, it's one of those things where really the owner is going to have to judge that, and if people are not coming because the parking lot's too full, or there's no place to park, it's bad for business, too.
But you have...
We'll have to solve that. But, you know, the problem is, we have this building that was built to a certain size long ago, and we're doing the best we can with it.
But you have options, and that's good to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, can you talk a little bit about the peak parking?
Yeah, again, our peak parking while school's in session, when school's in session, is on a Saturday typically from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. So it's really 2:00 to 5:00 PM. It's really only about three hours a week. During the week, it's empty, unfortunately. That's one thing that we're trying to change with adding the new attractions to get more of a weekday crowd. But really, even when we have those three hours of peak times, in the two and a half, the year and a half we've been in business, we have not seen a problem.
Good. Thank you.
Just to follow up, the theory we're operating under is that this isn't like an office building, for example, whereby doubling the amount of space, you're doubling the amount of people who are using it. We don't think that's what's applicable here. It's one use. It's Monster Mini Golf. It's going to have the same number of people, you know, just spread out over a bigger time period.
Thank you.
Peter. Penny, do you have any questions? I think you're muted, Penny.
I am muted. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, any questions?
Just a small comment. Back when I was a member of the racquetball club, when the building was completely full of people, there was always room for more cars back there.
Thank you, Ken. Bob Legner.
Ask Peter, is there a way, if we waive the parking for this particular use, does that then just go with this particular use, or if he would, to sell the building to somebody else who maybe needed more parking to use the whole building, would it carry over?
It would only be for this particular use, that is, you know, an amusement center, indoor recreation use and amusement center. If we sold it to someone who wanted to do office, the reduction wouldn't apply at all. If we sold it to someone who wanted to do the exact same use, then yes, it would continue to apply.
Okay.
But it's use of an indoor recreation center. That's it.
That's it.
Thank you, Bob. Rob Stoll.
The only, is this something that would be a, okay, I guess, I don't have a concern. As a matter of fact, I'm kind of looking forward to a virtual reality-type scenario. Mark's smiling. I'm sorry you can't see me. I'm working on old technology here. But I can, I can envision something like that really taking off, given the advancements in the technology. And I'm wondering if, in this time that you've had to, you know, think about your business plan and look forward, could that be something which you could end up getting 20 or 30 people in, you know, fighting, you know, battles from Lord of the Rings or something of that nature?
Well, I think what happened there is if we get an increase in crowd, well, one of two things. What typically happens is you've got a family of two or three kids. The younger ages are playing mini golf and laser tag. The older teenagers are staying home because it's not the cool thing to do, or whatever it may be. They may come with the family now to play the VR games. So it's same car, same, same, you know, it's another person coming in the same vehicle. Or if it does take off with an older crowd, it's not going to be from Saturday from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. Again, it's not the cool time for the older crowd to be coming in with the six and seven and eight-year-olds. It'll be weekday, it'll be Friday night, Saturday night, when there's plenty of parking to begin with. So again, that's what we're trying to balance out, the needs through more of the week.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. And I can echo what Ken said. I was a member back when that was the racquetball club, and yeah, never, ever had, and we ran leagues at every night of the week, pretty much, and it was never crowded.
Thank you, Rob. I have no questions. Linda, do you have questions? Linda, are you on mute?
No, she isn't.
Linda is not muted.
Linda? Well, Linda's trying to unmute. This is Beth Kavag, and I just want to say, there isn't a staff report. Staff report really isn't needed, necessary in regards to this application. Everything that I would say would be positive in nature. We were, this commission was very careful working with the applicant on the first special permit to make it work for that building. The landscaping, the fencing, the garbage removal, they've repaved and restriped the parking lot, done all the lighting as was proposed. And I would say, as far as our department is concerned, or any department in our wing, we have not received one complaint about noise, garbage, kids milling around, anything of that nature. So I think it was a good fit.
Thank you, Beth. All right. Unfortunately, Linda can't get in. I hope she didn't have any questions. So there's no reason, Beth, that we can't close this hearing, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so if we're all in agreement, this public hearing is closed. Any, everybody by I?
Oh, wait a minute. I have to unmute them.
I.
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 Okay, you have to state your names if we're going to do a voice...
Bob Legner, I.
Kitty Grant, I.
Rob Stoll, I.
Pat Rist, I.
Ken Parsons, I.
And I think we have everybody. I think that is everybody. So this public hearing is closed. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. I'm going to keep listening until the next item I have on the menu, but I'll be muted.
Peter? Peter, before you mute yourself, can I ask you a question technically?
Yes.
And David, would you chime in on this, too?
Sure.
In order for them to see a site plan, for example, when Peter was talking about the Route 6 project, is there a way for Peter to bring up the site plan and put it on the screen so it's the main?
Absolutely. There's an option for Peter to share his screen at the very bottom, similar to what Nancy did before we started the meeting by accident. And if he has the documents up, he can show them what he, what they are on his screen. I don't know if that's something that you're, you're able to do, Peter, but if you are, and if you would like to, there we go.
Michael, do you know how to, I'm, okay, I'm also going to ask Mike Mizuka to unmute his mic.
Yep, I've got him.
Because I want to ask him if he knows how to do it himself for his future application that's on tonight.
Okay.
Oh, that's interesting.
All right. I did unmute him.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes. Mike, do you know how to do this?
I haven't tried that yet, but I'm, unfortunately, I've gotten some issues with my laptop before and the, and the audio. That's why you couldn't hear me.
Okay.
So I had to resort to my, to my phone.
Okay.
Okay.
When it comes time for Mike's presentation, Beth, I can go into Google Drive and pull up the shared files for him.
Perfect. Okay, so just hang in there, Mike. We'll be with you shortly.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, David. Thanks, Peter.
Mark, you can probably take off. I'll keep paying attention.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Have a good night. Stay healthy.
You, too.
All right, next on our agenda is our business meeting, and I'm going to see Rob Stoll for Rich Tibbetts and Linda Curtis for Steve Duchell. So if someone would please make a motion to approve our meeting minutes of March 10th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 10th.
Second. Kitty.
Was that you, Penny?
We have to...
Say your name.
Kitty Grant.
Bob Legner made the motion. Kitty Grant seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor by I. Pat Rist, I.
Bob Legner, I.
I do, just for the minutes, I do have a correction.
Go ahead.
On page two, the work session for Nomita and Stephen Grana, toward the bottom, it shows the land value at $139. I think that's a mistake.
Missing a zero.
Yeah, missing a zero.
I think so. Okay.
All right, Bob, you accept the change?
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
So again, Pat Rist, I.
Kitty Grant, I.
Bob Legner, I.
Penny Kessler, I.
Rob Stoll, I will abstain since I wasn't there.
Linda Curtis, I.
Oh, Linda's on.
Oh, hi, Linda.
Sorry, I had a call in. My new microphone didn't work.
Did we get, did we, Linda, did you I for the meeting minutes?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, our work session, Nomita and Stephen Grana, Tulot subdivision, number 18 Hollyville Road.
Mike Mizuka.
We spoke about this in our last meeting.
I'm sorry, Mike Mizuka's here. Just if he wants to, he can go through revisions of the drawings that are dated 3/18/2020. David, if you want to bring those up?
Yep, I'm working on it right now.
Okay, the drawings were reviewed by Wright Pierce. They had no further comments that would prevent you from taking action on this application, if you so choose, after you heard from Mike Mizuka.
Okay, Beth, you want me to go into the site plans, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I got it. Sharing screen two, sharing. Okay, can everybody see that?
Sure does.
Make sure it's the revisions.
It's kind of small.
Yep, don't worry.
Yeah, very nice.
All right. Oh, boy. If I could zoom in farther, I would, I would let you know what the revision date is, but it's the, yeah, it says on the top, revised March 18, 2020. That's the most...
Perfect. All right, tell Dave, Michael, tell Mike, tell David where you want him to go.
Okay, hang on here. I got to, I got to see if I can bring up the size of this at all. No, I can't. Oh, I wish I could do this on touchscreen. Okay, there we go. Can we hear Mike?
Yeah, Dave, if you just go to the site development plan, we're just very, very minor changes.
Oh, there we go. Okay, that is this sheet, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
So we just, mainly with Wright Pierce, it's drainage questions, and there were just a couple of things. We added a high over, emergency high overflow, hoping great on the far end of the gallery system. And I think that was about the major, only the major thing that we did. Everything else was just, just comments, maybe change some, some wording on things. I know they had a question about the flow arrows, but the flow arrows weren't, they weren't necessarily flow arrows. They were just grade arrows on the driveway, just to, just to highlight what the grade of the driveway is, not necessarily which way the water was flowing.
Okay. Is that it, Mike?
Yeah, that was it. They had a question about the sewer lateral with the closeness to the existing catch basin out on the street, but again, my response was, that's how it was shown on the ASBILs that I obtained from the Public Utilities Department. So it's just, I'm just depicting how it's shown on the ASBILs.
The revisions were very, very minor in detail. The revisions were very, very minor in detail. And again, it was just adding details to ensure that whoever purchases the slot knows that where everything is located.
Yeah, the other, the other thing with, I kind of do with regard to the Health Department was that they wanted me to locate the existing system to make sure that we didn't have any violations with downgrading property lines. So I just had to spend some time out there probing around, and so we did show that more accurately, and we don't have any issues with that. So yeah, again, it was really small, minor stuff.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions from commission members?
Kitty Grant, no.
I have, I have one. I, I think there's probably only one lateral. They probably wouldn't have put a second lateral in for that second lot.
Yes.
Only a lateral for, for the, the existing house. So they would have to, to, in order to put a sewer in the second lot, they're going to have to dig up the road.
No.
They're not going to run off a lateral of somebody else's property, I don't think, are they?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
There is a lateral there. Usually when they, when they run the sewer lines, if they see that there's enough frontage for another lot, they will put another lateral in, and that's what they did. So that lateral is in, and it runs off to the shoulder, it's off to the edge of the pavement. So they don't need to dig up the pavement to put, to, to connect into that lateral, Bob.
But there's two laterals there then?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted.
Okay, thank you, Bob. I have no questions. Kitty?
No, I have no questions.
Penny?
No questions.
Ken?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. Rob?
No questions here.
Linda?
No questions.
All right, Beth was kind enough to put together an approval for this. Does anyone have a copy that they would like to read to get the motion started?
I do.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, I got it. I got it located.
David, I believe it's in the Google Tribe. If you can pull it up, they can put it right on the screen.
I would get to it, but then that would take me away from showing the site plan.
You can eliminate the site plan, I think, and bring up the resolution that would be.
Do you want me to make up a, a resolution?
If you, if you have it, you can read it.
Yeah, I have it. I make a motion to approve the application for a two lot subdivision of land pertaining of 4.0 acres parcel located at 18 Hollyville Road, R10 Zone.
R30 Zone.
R30 Zone. The printing on this is very small.
Look at the shared screen, Rob. That might be easier.
Okay, R30 Zone shown on a map entitled subdivision map Stephen M. and Namita R. Grana, 18 Old Hollyville Road, Bethel, Connecticut, dated January 21st, 2020 by Paul A. Hiro LS, Connecticut, out license 15167 with the following stipulations, 1 through 7. And reasons the commission stated upon its records that the development of the proposed subdivision and its improvements will not exert detrimental effect on neighboring properties or the surrounding district. The plans are in a substantial conformance with the subdivision and zoning regulations in the town of Bethel.
Thank you, Bob. Second, please.
Penny Kessler, second.
Thank you, Penny. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is.
Pat, just one thing, Penny. David, if you could go back up to the top, please?
Yep.
I don't know if this really matters, but, but Bob, when you were reading it, you said Namita R. Grana, and it's Namita D. Grana. And I just don't want anything coming back saying, oops.
And that's, and that's 18 Hollyville Road, too.
18 Hollyville Road, Bethel, okay, we got that. I'm good with that.
Okay, all in approval. Pat, aye?
Kitty, aye.
Bob Legner, aye.
Penny, aye.
Rob, aye.
Ken?
Linda, aye.
Yep, Kenny, aye.
Thank you. This motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, Maximilian Partners LLC, special permit, 13 Stony Hill Road. What do I have here?
Permit.
You need a motion to approve, to discuss?
Beth, we haven't done a, an approval on this yet, correct?
No, we didn't.
Okay.
I can give you suggested language verbally if you want to, if you're at that point.
Beth, let's start and see who has discussion topics about this. Kitty?
My only, my, my only concern was the parking, but Peter has explained it enough that I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Penny?
Am I muted? Am I not muted? I'm okay with it.
You're fine. Thank you, Penny. Kenny?
I think it's a good idea that he's willing to expand.
Bob Legner?
I'm fine as long as, like, Peter cleared up that the, the waiver actually would go with this type of use, not a different use. So that's fine. I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Rob Stoll?
I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Linda?
No questions.
Okay, and I had no questions either. So Beth, if we want to move this forward with the motion?
I would recommend that you make a motion to amend the special permit for Maximilian Partners at 13 Stony Hill Road to decrease all, all the special permit items would remain the same with the exception of parking, where you will decrease the parking to zero spaces for the remaining bottom floor. Number two would be to allow for completion of the site plan for three years or until 2023.
Can I make that motion based on what Beth just said?
I'll second it.
I have a comment. I apologize. Didn't Peter say he was looking for the five-year deadline applied to the special permit?
He was, but originally it was approved two years ago.
Okay, all right.
The site plan work that needed, needs to be done, he was saying technically, usually have five years to complete a site plan.
Okay, perfect.
By extending this another three years, you're just following the basic site plan rule.
Excuse me? What, so what is the date on that?
2023.
It's going to be three years. I'll give you the particulars for that.
Okay, that's 2023. Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask the chair one question?
Absolutely.
May I, may I ask the, Mr. Peter to unmute himself, just to clarify that I've covered the intent of the commission as far as the amendment?
There were, the only thing I would say is that the regulation allows reduction of parking over 10,000 square feet. And there's a little fudge factor in there because their, both floors are a little more than 10,000 square feet. So if it can be reduced to, you know, parking for the first 10,000, no parking for everything over 10,000. That would be excellent.
Thank you, Peter. If I may have a motion, please?
I'd like to move, I move what Beth said.
Thank you, Penny.
I'll second that. Bob Legner.
Thank you, Bob. All those in favor? Pat, aye?
Kitty, aye.
Bob, aye.
Penny, aye. Ken?
Yep, aye.
And I heard you, Rob Stoll?
Yes, ma'am.
Linda, are you on mute?
No, Linda's unmuted.
Oh.
I think Linda might have tried to her microphone again.
Yeah, okay. All right, motion passes. Next on our agenda is Shelley Woods LLC, 8-30G application revision, main structure residential unit modification, three approved units to six approved, six proposed units, number 91 Worcester Street.
In the Google Tribe, there was two items there. One was a letter from Attorney Marcus requesting his own configuration of the affordable units. If you recall, at the last meeting, we were discussing, there's going to be five units now that are affordable. We determined that three of them have to meet the 60% rule, which is the lower income, and two would meet the 80%, which is the higher income. The question arose whether it would be applied to the one or two-bedroom units for the last unit. So it's hard to understand, but we all agreed that one unit would be two bedrooms, and one unit would be one bedroom under the 80% rule. Then we all agreed that under the 60% rule, one would be a two-bedroom, and one would be a one-bedroom. What that left is you have one more affordable unit, which you have the ability to decide if it's going to be a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit. The one thing I will tell you in regards to that is that for our counts or the numbers that we're always trying to meet that we never can, it does not matter if it's a one-bedroom unit or a two-bedroom unit, we will get two points for that unit.
Perfect, perfect.
And follow me.
Yeah, his letter was.
It's your decision.
All right, I'll reach out to commission members for comments. Kitty, I'll start with you.
I personally would like to see the last unit to be a two-bedroom.
Penny?
I'm just wondering from Kitty, how come?
I, I think it, you know, it would have a better use, a broader use, more easily rentable. Just, just the way I was looking at it, one bedroom, it would be more limited. The two-bedroom, I think, would have much broader use.
Okay, thanks. A question, are we talking now specifically about the affordability issue or the complex as a whole?
I thought it was just affordability.
Just affordability.
Okay, then I'm, I'm good.
You're good, Penny?
Yes, thank you.
With the two-bedroom?
Yeah.
Thank you. Kenny?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Bob Legner?
I'm okay with the two-bedroom.
Rob Stoll?
I think the two-bedroom is a great idea.
Linda? No, I guess we still don't have her.
She's actually called in on her phone, that little phone.
Okay.
That's Linda.
I hear.
That's me. That's Linda. Yeah, I'm sorry, my, the phone that I was using to call in went dead on me, so then I had to run downstairs, get another phone. Hasn't been working very well tonight. Anyway, I'm fine with the two bedrooms. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with the two-bedroom as well. Beth, are you going to draft something approving this?
Again, what I was going, all I was going to do is refer to the original approval.
Okay.
And I do believe Attorney Marcus's letter was, is up in the Google Tribe, and I hope that everybody read it in regards to the one or the two-bedroom. I would say that I agree with the commission as far as your choice with the two-bedroom, and going over the numbers of rental units that we have available or we have coming online shortly, with, there is a, a need for more two-bedroom units at the 60% level.
Good.
The, no, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. What, basically what we would be doing, what you would be doing is making a motion to approve this evening in regards to 91 Worcester Street, the amended site plan, all the, all other conditions would apply, including the changes that you've made this evening regarding the affordability plan.
All right, if I may have someone to make the motion?
I'll make that motion. Bob Legner.
Thank you, Bob. A second, please?
I'll second it, Kitty.
Thank you, Kitty. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This motion has been approved?
No, you got to vote.
Oh, sorry. All right. We'll do a vote. I vote, yes. Kitty?
Yes.
Penny?
No.
Yes, Bob Legner.
Thank you. Ken?
Yes.
Rob Stoll?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Thank you all. Moving on, new business, Verity Properties LLC, site plan application, zoning map amendment, RMO zone existing to Village Center Zone Transit Oriented Development, TOD overlay zone proposed, 80 South Street.
Wow. That's unchanged.
You're right.
Are they going to be taking down the whole building that's there now? Obviously, yes. What am I saying?
There is no old building there.
Oh, there is a house next to the railroad track.
Are they taking the house? Okay.
Yeah. Because that, the house was part of the original, was going to be part of the original change when, when they were, when Rody brought it in. It's a pretty building.
I believe Attorney Olson's here to just state what the application is.
Oh, okay. Hi, I'm back. Peter Olson. I put up on the shared screen our architectural rendering. The application is, first of all, for a map amendment. This property is not located in the TOD, but we think it should be. We think the underlying zone should be Village Center as well. What that will do is allow a 10-unit development. Our proposal is, as you see here, it would remove the existing house. We have submitted, along with the map amendment application, an application for site plan approval. So you have all the information, including the architectural, for the entire development all at the same time. What needs to be done tonight, I think, is set a public hearing date and refer it to your various review agencies, including architecture. We'd like to get started with the architecture so we don't get held up in the process.
All right.
In regard, in regards to a public hearing date, Pat, I would suggest May 26th.
Right.
We'll give you approximately 45 days to refer it out to the appropriate agencies for review.
All right, I would like to make a motion to set a public hearing date for May 26th and refer it out to all the appropriate agencies. If I may have a second, please?
I'll second that. Bob Legner.
Thank you, Bob. All in agreement, I'll start with Kitty.
Aye.
Aye for me. Penny?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Bob Legner?
Aye.
Rob Stoll?
Aye.
Linda Curtis?
Aye.
Okay, this motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to disconnect. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Good night.
Hang around, Peter. We're having fun.
Yeah.
Okay, next on our agenda is the Planning and Zoning Department Report, Review and Acceptance of Scheduling Applications for Hearings under Connecticut Governor Executive Order Number 7 B as in void.
Okay, before anybody leaves, I hope Penny's still here. I knew she had another meeting. I just, first off, I wanted to know, going forward with all these applications, some of us are more comfortable having paper copies in front of us when we're having large public hearings or public hearings in general. And if anybody wishes to have paper copies, I would like them to let me know now, and we'll make arrangements over the next 60 days to provide you with all the documentation, instead of you having to print it up yourselves. Obviously, you can't do the maps. But if I have to increase the volume of maps, just let me know. Who wants a map?
Kitty Graham, I would like to have copies.
Kitty, okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to have a copy because when I printed them up, like I said, the print comes out so fine, you can barely read it.
It's so tiny.
I have no prob, I have no problem with having them on Google Docs or whenever we're getting them on. As, as long as the resolution is okay, because I can make it, actually, I've got a pretty large screen here, so I can make them pretty big.
Okay. There, when, if, I'll, I'll jump in here for a second. So the, the doc, the resolution depends on how the documents are originally sent to us. Most times when it's a site plan that you're looking at, the native size is a 24 by 36, and usually the resolution with those is pretty good.
Yeah.
If it's a regular document that you're looking at, most times it's an eight and a half by 11. Depending on how your print options are set up on your printer at home, it, sometimes it'll format to make the resolution to the size of the paper or to the size of what was put on. put on the paper in the file.
Okay, the point of the matter is though, I do not want people having to spend their own paper print and things of that nature.
Yeah.
Not these.
Yeah.
Uh, we're more than happy to make packages and give them to you if that gives you a better comfort level.
Yeah, e- especially if it's, if it's for the site plans, cause I know the site plans, it's kind of awkward to try to print those on your own. So if you want copies of those, definitely what Beth is saying.
I'm just looking for a round number.
Beth, put me on the list.
Okay.
Kenny?
Yep.
Okay.
I would like site plans also.
Excuse me. Kenny wants paper copies? Yeah. Pat wants paper copies.
Okay.
Bob wants a paper copy.
Penny is okay online.
Okay.
Uh, Linda would like paper copies of the site plans, but anything else, some fine printing.
Okay, so let me review that with you guys. We have Kitty, Bob, Ken, Pat, Linda, especially the site plans.
Exactly.
Put Pat down for the site plans only.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's the gist of, of what we're doing here is, is it's all for site plans and not necessarily for the other documents that we get out. Is that, is that correct?
Sure.
That's correct from Rob Stoll's.
Fine with me, then. Fine with Kitty, too.
Okay, along the same lines, dealing with the new way of us doing our meetings, um, let's see, what we have done in, and most everybody is very good about this, 99% of our attorneys and engineers, um, it is a requirement that we receive a complete application in electronic format, not, not piecemealed where we have to take something from an engineer, something from a lawyer, something from an applicant. We receive things, um, by Google Drive such as attorney Olson, um, or by flash drives such as Mike Mizuko, if Mike was still here. It's come recently, I received something that unfortunately was not able to be put on, um, uploaded electronically because it wasn't submitted electronically. And I just want to reaffirm with the commission that that is your policy, that's been your procedures for, I believe, the last three years since the courts changed their appeal process to exclude paper. That's what started it with us. So I just wanted to verify with you guys, this is the policy, this is how you accept applications.
Yeah, Kitty, yes, you're, you're right.
Okay, we need that because going forward and doing the Zoom, the only way we can get things up to you and online in a timely fashion is by doing it through Google Drive or flash drive and setting up one folder where you can all go in when the general public can go in.
Excellent.
Okay.
I've got to get to my other meeting here. Um, take care, everybody, stay safe.
Thank you, Penny.
You too, Penny.
Take care. You're in our thoughts with what every point you do. Okay, so that was, that was the last thing. So you're all in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's in the brain.
Yes.
Lastly, um, I received a notice from Sullivan Architects where Alyssa Valpatti is our consulting architect. And, um, she has left that firm.
Ooh.
She has, um, opened up her own firm within the town of Bethel.
Wow.
Wow.
So.
Heavy.
Very exciting news in some aspects. Um, I enjoy working with her, but if you guys want to continue using her as your TOD consultant and your village consultant, you would have to, um, give us permission to do so. Or if you want to stay with Sullivan Architects, you can do that, too.
I, well, may I, Kitty, may I say, uh, Lisa has been with us for quite a while and I think her work has been outstanding. And I, I would think that, I would like to see us go with her or stay with her.
Bob Legner here, do, do we have any kind of a contract with Sullivan that we would have to break or?
That, what we would do is we would have the contract reviewed by our counsel just to ensure that we do have the right. I mean, you have to, we have to, I'm sure Sullivan will understand the reason we went with Sullivan, number one, was because of Alyssa's involvement. But I'm working on that if you choose to go with Alyssa.
Uh, does she, has she gave you any indication that it would be okay?
I've had one very brief conversation with her and she would, um, like to stay very much.
Okay. I'd say go with it then, Bob Legner.
I'd like to make a motion then that we continue working with Alyssa Valpatti. If I may have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
Bob Legner.
Guy.
Kenny, one of us.
Okay. Um, Kitty?
Oh, definitely.
Uh, Penny's left us. Kenny?
Yes, definitely.
Bob Legner, I have you. Uh, Rob Stoll?
Yes.
Linda Curtis?
I haven't had much experience, obviously, since I'm new on the board, but it only makes sense to stay with somebody that, that knows what we want for the town, so I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Linda.
Of going with Alyssa, yep.
Thank you. Uh, motion passes.
Very good.
Next is, do you have anything else before we move on to the public?
Uh, no, that's it for this evening.
Okay, uh, we're now at public input.
Hello, BJ.
Okay, I'm assuming you're on. Is there anything you'd like to talk to us about?
Um, I just do have a question. Um, in the minutes, it said you were going to have a public hearing tonight for all woods recyclers that they were resubmitting. So what happened there?
What happened with there was with the, um, the, what happened in the world, uh, we did not want our first Zoom meeting as, to be a public hearing involving Arrow from 104 Worcester Street. So I spoke with attorney Marcus and he totally agreed. And what, uh, I don't know if it was in the paper yet, it should be, um, but that public hearing has been scheduled, uh, later this month for your next meeting.
That should be interesting.
Yeah. Like the last.
That's why David is here. David is part of this, he will probably be the administrator for that meeting, just when Pete, with people raising their hands and waving and all that kind of stuff during the public hearing portion.
Uh, BJ, anything else?